I believe that qualities of a good school board member include integrity, honesty, and transparency. And I have a proven track record in all three of those areas. I have integrity. I'm gonna be the same guy no matter where you see me, whether that be at the soccer field coaching on Saturday or preaching on Sunday at church. I'm honest. You don't have to worry about me going back on my word, and I'm gonna do what I say. You don't have to worry about, well, is he gonna go back on a decision that he made? I'm gonna make those decisions after listening to all parties. I'm gonna do research on my own, and then I'm gonna make a decision in the best interest of the stakeholders. I'm also transparent. There's not gonna be any backroom deals or anything like that going on. You're gonna know what your school board is doing. If you wanna know how I feel about a certain issue, just ask me. I'm happy to tell you. Our teachers and staff are the greatest asset we have in our education system. We must do everything in our power to support them and to encourage them and to help them make the best environment for our children. Our teachers and staff are with our students more hours a day than we are on most days. We have to make sure that we have the best staff possible and that we give those staff members the tools they need to do the best job that they can do. I believe that we can do that if we work together. We need to put things aside that are causing divisiveness and focus on things that we can agree on. We need to collaborate together, and we need to set aside any adversarial relationships of the past and move forward, working together for the sake of our students and for the sake of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, whenever you're ready.
Certainly. Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank the Hayes Chamber of Commerce and Forte State University Student Government Association for hosting us tonight. A little bit about me, I have 21 years of volunteer experience in the public schools, starting back when my daughter was in kindergarten, way back when we lived in Alabama. I've been in Hayes for 17 years. My volunteer experience here in Hayes includes the Olafland Site Council, the Hayes High Site Council, the USD 49 Site Council, and probably more Booster Club, Booster Clubs and Home and School Associations than I can remember. I'm also, I also help with the Hayes High Musical and the, you may see me at the football games, manning the drink and snack table. I bring those up, they seem a bit trivial, but I firmly believe that whatever we can do, we should do, no matter how big or how small. I have had, I have experience in the private sector, the public sector, and the nonprofit sector. I served in the US Army, worked on Capitol Hill as a staffer, and worked as a journalist back in Washington DC. So I really believe I have a lot of skills and talents that I could bring to the board, and would like to do so. Finally, I'm committed to the job. I have attended school board meetings for almost two years now, every other week. I've also attended a school board training session and in addition to all the committees that I've mentioned already. I also understand the accreditation process, I've been studying upon that, the budget process, and I filed for, to run back in, in June. Yes, everyone knows me by Mike, but the ballot will say Michael Walker, so to just make sure there's no confusion. You know, I'm pleased that we have four good candidates up here. I do feel I have probably more experience and better prepared than most, say maybe a person on my left here, but I do feel that even if I'm not elected, I will support these guys.
Next time. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bickel, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Lance Bickel, and I'd like to take this time to thank the Forte State University Student Government Association, as well as the Chamber of Commerce for the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm both excited and honored to be running for the USD 489 School Board. I know this is a huge responsibility, and I welcome the challenge. I think I've proved beyond a doubt that I have the dedication and perseverance to forge ahead and do what's best for this district. We've made many tough decisions over the last four years, and while not all of those were popular, change never is. The only thing that I can say is all of them were made with the betterment of the district at heart. I look forward to continuing to work with the students and faculty of this district. I was born and raised in Hayes, Kansas, and I'm proud to have attended Wilson Elementary School, Felton Middle School, and Hayes High School. And I actually value the education that I received there, and that's part of the reason that I'm also looking at this. I truly believe Hayes is a great place to raise a family. I have a wonderful wife, Amanda, I've ten years, actually, we just had our 10-year anniversary this year, two beautiful little girls, Alexis, who is nine, and she attends Wilson, and she is in third grade, and Elena, who is six, and she is in first grade at Wilson. So the next question I get all the time is, why did I run for school board and why in the heck am I running again? So while I could sit up here and give you political answers, four years ago, I made the decision to get involved. I'd followed the school board and was unhappy with how things were being done, and I didn't like the decisions that were being made, and I made the decision then that it was not right for me to question things if I wasn't willing to throw my hat in the ring and get in and try to be a part of the solution. So here we are. Since joining the school board, I think we've made significant progress in balancing the budget, the first time in 20 years, implementing long-range planning, implementing maintenance and upgrade plans throughout the district, and there's still much more to be done on this, but we're getting there. I honestly think USD 49 as a whole has a lot to be thankful for, but as with anything, there's always room for improvement. I feel that if I am re-elected, that I can continue to bring a fresh new perspective to things, I can continue the fiscal responsibility and accountability, as well as continuing a realistic approach to the issues and challenges that face our district now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young, when you're ready.
Is it okay if I stand? Feel a little different, I guess. Can you hear me? My name is Sophia Rose Young. I'm the mother of two, I have a toddler boy and a baby girl. I am the donor communications manager for Developmental Services of Northwest Kansas, and I am, I graduated from Forte State University. I moved here from Lenexa, Kansas, where I attended USD 232, a very nice school district. My parents kept me there because they believed in that school district, and I did too. I was one of those students that, I woke up most of my mornings really excited to go to school, and I was sad when the bell rang to go home. And I think just as grownups and adults, we sometimes forget, and we don't always realize, but the public school system is where a lot of kids feel safe and loved and listened to and have structure when compared to their lives at home. I am unmarried, I have never been married, but my kids have the same father, his name's Brian Rivera. He attended Lincoln Elementary School, Hayes Middle School, and Hayes High School. He's currently an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer with DS&amp;WK's Food Bank, and he is the president of the Advanced Technology Student Organization here at Forte. If elected, I would be representing a demographic currently not well-represented on the school board, one, that is unmarried parents, two, millennial parents, and I'd also like to point out that if I am not elected, there would only be one female on the seven-man school board, six males, one female. I truly believe that a good system, school system, that continuously entices young families to stay in the school district will contribute greatly to economic growth, which would be nice, nice to have that contribution around here. I look forward to potentially serving on the board with these men and working as a team to make decisions and to convey the vision of the community while doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll try not to stand again, 'cause this mic is really hard to get up.
Now that we have completed the opening statement, I will ask the candidates three prepared questions. Each candidate will receive one minute and 30 seconds to answer each question. Based on the predetermined order, Mr. Walker will be the first to answer. The first question of this evening's forum is, what is the role of a school board member and the role of administrators?
Well, first of all, I wanna point out that as a school, a member of the school board, I don't have, no member of the school board has individual power or authority. We're, we only have power and authority as a member of the board. So having that, said that, the role of the school board is to advise the school district to oversee the budget and to help solve problems and prepare for things like the accreditation process that they're going up for. The role of the administration is to administer the schools, to supervise the buildings, supervise the principals, and to work through the, basically the executive chain of the, the school district. So I see that there, of course, anyone involved in the school board should have passion for education, passion for public education, but our job is not to run the schools, our job is to oversee the district and to approve budgets primarily.
Thank you. Mr. Bickel, when you're ready.
So we as a school board hire one person in the district, and that person is the superintendent. And I guess I look at them as more of the, for lack of a better term, the captain of the boat. We as a school board are merely there, again, for lack of a better term, I guess we're the rudder. We are there to steer the boat in the right direction. I think we walk a very fine line as far as to keep from micromanaging and things like that, and that's one of the things that I've tried as far as with going forward on this, because I felt that when, when, four years ago, when we did start in this, I do think that there was a lot of that going on. We hired a great superintendent, and I feel we have to let him do his job. I think John has done a terrific job since bringing him on board, but again, I think it's still one of those deals where you walk a fine line as far as asking questions and trusting the people you have hired, and I think that's one of the things that we as a board are continuing to work hard on and continuing to try to do, to rebuild the trust, the transparency and things like that, and have the collaboration with other members of the district and the community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young, when you're ready.
The school board is like a liaison between the community and the administration and vice versa. So whatever it is that the administration is doing or wants kinda gets sent back to the community through the school board, and the school board will take what it is the community wants and wants to see done and is thinking, and brings it back to the administration. The school board and the administration both have a fiscal responsibility, but on top of that, the school board has the fiscal stewardship responsibility of telling everyone where that money is and making decisions on behalf of the taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
I think the biggest responsibility for the school board is to make sure that the right staff are in place, and that begins with the superintendent. In addition to hiring the superintendent, we need to make sure that we're communicating with the taxpayers, with the voters, with the teachers, with the staff, with the students, so that we're hearing different voices. We need to be in the schools, meeting people, talking to people, where they're at, so that we can communicate clearly some of those messages that I think, if you're only sitting in the boardroom, you're not gonna hear those messages. So we need to be out with the people, talking to them, and hearing what concerns they have, what questions they have, what issues they have, so that we can bring those back to the administration. Many people are not comfortable going in front of a board meeting, being on TV and asking their question or bringing their concern, and it's been said that you can either make it easy for you or easy for the other person to communicate, and it's, as a board member, we need to make it as easy as possible for people to communicate with us, so that we can share those concerns and those issues and those questions that are very valid from the community and from the teachers.
Thank you very much. Our second question will begin with Mr. Bickel. What skillset or perspective do you bring to the board that will enhance its effectiveness?
You know, I was a successful business owner here in the Hayes community for 15 years. I feel I learned a lot during that time, as well as, as my four years so far that I've been on the board or had the opportunity to do, you know, about how operations should work and really what it takes to be successful. I've also had the opportunity to serve on a number of other boards throughout the community, like the Chamber of Commerce, the Ellis County Economic Coalition, the USD 49 Foundation, and I think that also gives me a unique perspective as far as how things work and what is needed to keep things running correctly. You know, I'm not afraid to ask those questions, and as I said, with, with being a member of those different, those different organizations and being able to represent them, I think it does give me a unique perspective as far as different ways to look at things. I mean, that's the great thing about a board, is you have a number of unique perspectives as far as to go through and look and solve and collaborate to solve problems, so.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young, whenever you're ready.
Like I mentioned before, I'd be representing a demographic currently not represented very well on the school board. Also, I have my Bachelor of Arts in Communication Studies with an emphasis in public relations. I attended a Kansas School Board Workshop Seminar with Superintendent Thiessen. I took a graduate-level course in public policy, and it was actually through that that I became oddly fascinated by policy. And then I kinda have taken it as an advantage with there had, had only been three open spots on the school board and three people running. So rather than really getting out there, trying to get you to know my name and try to get you to like me for who I am, I have been studying books on leaderships in school boards and what it truly means to be a school board member. I've been getting, putting so much energy into that and reading different case studies on effective school board members and what Bickel alluded to earlier, trying not to be one of those school board members that meddle into things and just knowing where my place is as a school board member.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
I have a lot of experience in different organizations as well. I was the president of a regional camp that has campers and churches that represent from Nebraska and Kansas and Colorado, and one of the challenges that we had with an area so large was communication. And communication is something that I do well. I'm currently the secretary of the Ellis County Ministerial Alliance, and so I'm communicating with the clergy on a regular basis with various issues and concerns that people have. I also feel like I collaborate well with people. I've been the president of Home and School at Roosevelt for the last year and a half, and I'm also on the middle school, Home and School as well. And one of the things that we've been able to do is really support the teachers and get to know what are the real issues here. As a parent, I know from the parent's side what kinds of things are going on, but I need to, needed to know from the teachers, what kinds of things are you facing right now in your classroom that we can be supporting you with? And as a school board member, we have to be able to do that. We have to say, you know, we are coming at one perspective, but the teachers have a different perspective, other parents are gonna have different perspectives. We have to come together and learn from one another, sit in a room together and collaborate with one another, so we can make the best decisions moving forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, when you're ready.
I'm ready. As I mentioned in my introduction, I have a lot of experience in the private sector, public sector, and nonprofit sector. In addition to those jobs that I explained already, I'm currently the docking, the director of the Docking Institute of Public Affairs here at Forte State University. In that job, we do social, social science research, such as surveys, strategic planning, focus groups, economic feasibility studies, et cetera. In that job, I get out and talk to a lot of people. So not only am I trained in speaking with people and listening to them and getting feedback from them, I do it on a daily basis. My campaign slogan is basically commitment, engagement, and temperament. I've already explained, I'm publicly engaged, and I will continue to do so as a school board member. I'm committed to the job, I believe I explained that already. I haven't touched on temperament yet, but I think it's very important for anybody in public office and especially a school board to be able to gather information, assess that information, talk to experts, and then come to conclusions and decisions in a calm, cool manner. I believe I can do that, and I have a history of doing so. Through my job at the Docking Institute, I'm a member of the Hayes Chamber of Commerce, the Western Kansas Regional Economic Development Alliance, and a host of other groups. Again, that's, through those organizations, I network with people, I talk to people, get information, and I would like to bring those skills to the board. Networking and building social capital is extremely important. Through my classes I taught at, here at Forte, I teach rural development, community planning, and population change, those are all very important to a district such as ours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I read our final prepared question, I would like to remind the audience that we do have time for audience questions. If you have a question for the candidates, please write it on the paper provided at your seat, hold it in the air, and a member of the Student Government Association will pick it up and take it to the three unbiased screeners to my left. For this third prepared question, we will start with Ms. Young. How does your past, how do, there's a pluralization.
Yes.
How do your, how do your past experiences help prepare you to serve the community in this position?
Well, with that question, I almost wanna repeat everything I just said. Again, I will be representing a different demographic currently not represented, but I will share a little more. I, I was one of those kids who really did love going to public school, and I see the importance of it. I see that there's, there's gonna be a transfer of wealth. There's, sorry, there's a lot of families who have kids, and they end up moving out of the community, and that, that money's gonna transfer to them. And if they're moving out of the community, they're not gonna be here to contribute to the growth of Hayes. The enrollment at, in the school district has decreased this year, and I think that's part of it. So if we can continue to come up with good ideas and listen to each other and build upon each other's strengths, we can find ways to grow our community and grow enrollment and just build and make this community even better than the beautiful community that it is.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
I think one of the things about my past experience that if you talk to people, you will find out that I'm very approachable, and I'm there to listen. I don't believe that I have all the answers to every question, but if I don't know the answer to something, I'm gonna find out. And I'm gonna find out that answer by listening to people, doing my research, and then making decisions in the best interest of the stakeholders. I'm going to do things that bring people together, because we really need to unify around our teachers, around our students, around our community, and really work together to move forward as a school district. I've been speaking all my life with different groups and with different people, and in this community specifically with the Ellis County Ministerial Alliance and other organizations, and I really believe that communication needs to be improved, and that communication has to be a two-way street. It's not always about getting your message out, but also having a dialogue and understanding what people need and what people desire.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, when you're ready.
You asked about past experiences and how they can help us in our job here, okay. In a nutshell, I think I have, my experience provides a lot of experiences. I grew up in a military family, so I bounced around from place to place throughout the US and in Europe, so I have a lot of experience living in other places. Here in Hayes, I mentioned my experience already on the various site councils and booster clubs, et cetera, that I've worked on. These all, these things all build to, build experience within a person. I forgot to mention that I have had four kids go through the USD 49 school system, starting at Olafland, Felton slash Hayes Middle School, depending on the year, and then Hayes High School. My youngest daughter is a senior at Hayes High, as a matter of fact, I just ran over from the vocal orchestra performance, which I'm missing part of. I do believe I have a lot of experiences that come from my experience in the nonprofit sector, the private sector, the public sector, my experience in the military. And I explained already the job I hold now as the director of the Docking Institute and how that provides me a lot of experience and develops some skills to deal with people, whether it's in large groups or small, one-on-one, or large, large organizations. I would like to be able to bring those skills and talents to the board, and I think I will be a productive member of the board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bickel, when you're ready.
So I think as far as, obviously, to echo what everybody else has said up here, obviously the experience is important. You know, I guess I have the unique advantage in this situation, I guess if you could call it that, that I have been able and had the opportunity to serve for four years on the school board. Three of those four years that I've served, I've been the board president. So definitely, I think, you know, and I could tell you firsthand that, you know, getting on here, you know, I mean, it takes years to learn and continue learning about the workings of the district and, and all the things from the state level and how things work. I would have never in a million years, I mean, even watching the board, you know, for several years before that and talking with previous board members and things like that, you know, there were many times that I sat on there and thought to myself, why in the world would they make that decision? Why would they do this? And then you get on the board and you think, oh, that's why. And, and it's amazing, just, and it's no different than the city commission or anything else, until you, you learn the inner workings of that, a lot of those things are, it's a lot easier to sit on the outside and think, oh, well, that doesn't make any sense why they would do that, but there are a lot of things, you know, where, you know, certain items, your hands may be tied, the state, there may be certain things you have to do or that you're required to do, so. So I do think it is one of those. But as far as, again, going back to the experience, you know, as I said before, I've served on the chamber, I've owned a business, I've served on the coalition and still am. I've been on the USD 49 Foundation, so again, I go back to that experience and, and that I think a board brings, and it's the collaboration piece and really to be able to look at things as a team to, to accomplish those goals.
Thank you very much. This concludes the first portion of the forum for the USD 489 Board of Education Candidates. We will now have questions from the audience. Again, each candidate will receive one minute and 30 seconds to answer each question, and Kevin Daniels will be the first to answer due to the predetermined order. I come as a surprise, but many of the audience's questions are focused around the bond issue. Mr. Daniels, how do you explain the bond issue to citizens when they ask and the debt that comes along with it?
I think the bond issue has been thoroughly vetted by the committees that have been working on it, and that the bond addresses the safety and the security of our students. To not have storm shelters at our schools is unacceptable. I heard someone earlier today say, well, only one student has ever died in school during a tornado. That's appalling to me, because what if that was your student? What if that was your child? We need storm shelters in our schools. We need to have accessible areas so that all students have access to equal education. There's schools that are not ADA compliant. There's, Roosevelt has a shelter, but the kids in wheelchairs and things can't get down to it because you have to go downstairs. We have to make sure that we're providing an equal education to all students regardless of their abilities, and those safe and secure entrances are critical. We always say, well, that could never happen here. That's what every community says until it does. We have to hope for the best, but prepare for the worst, and this bond addresses some of those issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, when you're ready.
Well, if you're an opponent of the bond, I'm afraid I'm not your candidate. I was on the vision team that helped, that was part of the community, the community team that came together to develop our ideas. There was also a teachers team and a district team, and then we all came together and combined our ideas and argued and fought and, and finally came up with a plan to present to the board. You know, the last bond we passed was for the current high school, and that was 30 or 40 years ago. This bond is a 30-year bond, which will provide schools that will last another 30, 40, or 50 years. While nobody wants to increase their own taxes, I think we have to realize that it's time for a bond to be passed. This is totally different than the last bond. I've heard people say that it's just a rehash of the old bond, but it's not true. The last bond was a, the result of a feasibility, facility needs assessment developed 10 or 12 years ago, and then revisited every few, few years, packaged together by the board or advisors of the board, and then promoted as a bond. I think the board and I think the citizens should, the board does realize and citizens should realize that this is a totally different process. There was citizen engagement from the very beginning, and it's just time for us to pass a bond.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bickel, when you're ready.
So I would say probably the most important thing, and I've said this from, from day one, even back to the first bond that was unsuccessful, the most important part of this is the education piece and getting out there and making sure people understand not only what it covers, but how at the end of the day is it going to affect me as a, as a citizen of the community? What is it going to do to my taxes? You know, what is it going to do to, you know, the schools? How is it going to affect my kids, so on and so forth? So I think that education piece and really making sure people understand that is extremely important. As Mr. Walker alluded to, taxes. Nobody likes them, and I'm right there with you. I don't like taxes any more than the next person, but I also feel to an extent that we also have to look at this from, from a long-term investment in our community, and it's one of those things that with bonds, and again, as he alluded to, we have not had a bond in this community for years. If you look at any surrounding community anywhere around here, they've had not only one, but two or three or four bonds to go through and do this. So I feel that we've done a terrific job, our, our maintenance staff, the district in general has done a great job of keeping up to date with what we have here, but at the end of the day, I think it's something that we do have to reevaluate this. I think this time around, we've done a good job of listening to the community, I think the, the vision team and the different groups have gone out, they've really listened to everybody, the focus groups, everything with that, and I think that's been the most important thing, is going out there and making sure that, that people understand exactly what's going on.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young, when you're ready.
I've been learning about the school bond, just like the rest of you have, through the news, through listening in on board meetings and attending some of their tours of the elementary schools. I'd like to point out, what the role is with the school board with the bond isn't actually to create the bond, so the school board did not come up with the bond. It was a team of professionals and a, a whole bunch of volunteers. It was a team of professionals and a, a whole bunch of volunteers who put a lot of energy into this and had taken what people had want, uh, like what they didn't like the first time and revamped that and came back with a new bond. I really, really believe that the district does need a bond. What that bond actually looks like, if this is the bond or not, you know, I don't know. That's up to the community vote. I think the board made the right decision to put it in front of the community and let them decide because the vision team did put a lot of energy into it. I would say that, yes, it is large, but there had been this state law putting a limit on Kansas bond issues and I, I'm not quite sure what that limit is, but this seventy-eight million bond issue goes above that limit and that's because this is our one chance to be allowed to have a bond that big. Even the state of Kansas is saying, hey, look, we know you guys need a bond, you should put a lot more money to it and do it this time.
Thank you very much. Our second audience question will begin with Mr. Walker. If the bond does not pass, what is your plan to help the facilities of USD four-eight-nine?
Well, there are plans in place already. I know the high school is already converting their standard lighting system to LED and if I understand correctly, it's saving about three thousand dollars a month on electricity costs or is contributing to the savings. The air heating and air conditioning system is already slated to be repaired, whether the bond passes or not. So, the board is already, and I support these decisions, already putting plans in place to make improvements to facilities if the bond does not pass. Now, if the bond doesn't pass, there's going to have to be some hard decisions on what to do because the money will have to come out of capital outlay. So, for example, it might be possible to, well, and there's some issues to deal with like class size right now, which will be resolved if we pass a bond. If the bond doesn't pass and we have to deal with class sizes, then we may have to construct temporary classrooms outside of the high school, middle school, and elementary schools. We may need to add on to the cafeteria through some temporary facilities at the middle school because the cafeteria is way too small now. It's serving twice as many students as it was designed to do. But if we do those things, it's going to cost some money, so that money is going to have to come out of capital outlays. So, I sound kind of negative here and I guess I am. I think we need to pass a bond. If we don't pass a bond, however, the district itself is making plans and the board is already making plans to, to address the, uh, non-bond passage.
Thank you very much.
Or the bond non-passage, whatever.
Mr. Bickel, when you're ready.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Mr. Walker is correct. I mean, I, I do feel this is something that we're already doing. Um, you know, I, I guess that was, if, if I was to be asked if I had a priority when I got on the board four years ago, it would have been two things and that was long-range planning, budgeting, or, and I guess three, and maintenance. Those are things that I think that we've worked really hard, uh, the last number of years here to put in place. I felt getting on here that it was not responsible from a board perspective for us to just think that we were going to pass a bond or if, or if it failed, to think that it was just going to fix all of our problems. I really felt that we needed to get some sort of a plan, maintenance plan, things like that, in place to begin working on things regardless of what happened with the bond and, and proving that, that we were physically responsible with, with the taxpayers' money. I do feel, as I said, we're continuing to do that. In fact, one of the light projects of that would have been the hit, uh, middle school HVAC system that was just recently provided, or done. As he said, the LED lighting, things like that, we are continuing to do that. Now, having said that, um, you know, if the bond does not pass and we're going through on that, it's going to take a whole lot longer to go through. There's a, there's a long list of things that need to be addressed in this district and, uh, we can eventually get to them. I, I can't tell you when that, when that's going to be, uh, just based on, because we've got only so much money each year to go around to do that and we've got to go through and try to put that towards the most dire need possible as far as doing that, but I, I do feel that we are going through and addressing those needs and I think it's something we have to continue to do regardless of whether or not it passes or not.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young, when you're ready.
I do think they should continue as planned, continually to, uh, keep looking at the capital outlay fund and evaluating that. If, you know, I have no doubt if this bond issue gets rejected, that the vision team's going to keep coming back with a bond. I see that to be true. But if that keeps happening, that the bond issue keeps getting voted down, then the school board will really have to take a really hard look at that capital outlay plan and see where the money does need to go, make sure it is going to the right places. Because right now, I think they do have it kind of intertwined because they're not doing some projects because it's covered in the bond. One thing that the bond will not cover is teacher salary and I do think that no matter what, that's something that should not be forgotten or overshadowed, so that should be something that we continuously look at and make sure that we're still able to get the teachers well-paid.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
I think when it comes to the bond, I asked someone at the school and I said, what happens if the bond fails? And he said, well, we just come back next year and try again. And I said, we've got to have a better plan than that. If the bond fails, we need to get in a room with people who voted no and find out what is the reason why you're voting no on this bond. Because if we don't communicate, if we keep just coming up with these great plans and we try to communicate all the benefits of the bond and all the benefits of the things that we're trying to do without actually listening to people and listening to the voters, we're going to be in the same boat a year down the road and a year down the road every time we bring up a bond. We have to be able to communicate with one another and communicating is not a one-way street. When the board is making decisions that, um, that were said, you know, you, you don't know what the decisions have to be made until you're actually sitting there. Well, that's a problem when you're on the bo, board because you need to communicate clearly and be transparent with people and tell them, this is the reason why we're making this decision. Because that is a way to build trust. And when you're not being transparent, trust is eroded. And if you're listening to the bond issues and you're saying, this is what we need to do, we need to do, and we're never saying, do you understand what we're saying? Do you, do you, what is it that you're hearing us say? We're going to keep running into the same sort of problem.
Thank you very much. Our third audience question will begin with Mr. Bickel. What is the biggest issue facing USD four-eight-nine right now and what is your plan to tackle said issue?
It's funny because you, you talk about, uh, school districts, you talk about education in general and the one thing that continues to come in i, is, is money. Very, very similar to what we heard, just heard the city commission say. So, I think obviously from a financial standpoint, um, we're going to have to continue to be diligent in, in running our district as efficient as possible. Having said that, I think there's also a, a very delicate balance that we have to continue working to make it as efficient as possible, but also continue that transparency, you know, continue rebuilding that trust of the community. You know, I, I think probably one of the biggest things that we have i, is the budget shortfalls from the state. That's not something that's going to get better tomorrow. It's something that we're going to have to continue to work on, um, a, and continue to find new ways to improve our district as far as from a funding standpoint and things like that. I feel that we've done a pretty good job. Again, always room for improvement, but I, I think we have to continue working and being diligent in that aspect as far as from a funding standpoint, uh, to go through and actually do what we can, um, as far as from that funding standpoint, to get more money back into there. At the end of the day, we've got everything from, you know, places like the classroom where money has been taken out of, uh, different areas like that, you know, that we have to continue to find different ways to get, get some of that stuff back into there. It's not all doom and gloom. I think we're doing a good job as far as doing that, but, but it's definitely something we have to be cognizant of, uh, from a board standpoint and from a public standpoint of just knowing that, you know, there's only so much money to go around and I think we have to be as responsible as we can with it moving forward.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young, when you're ready.
So, I work for Developmental Services of Northwest Kansas and we serve roughly two-hundred-and-thirty individuals in Ellis County who have intellectual developmental disabilities. Our elementary schools in the district do not comply with this, yet there's a, there's a headquarters for developmental services out here and a very strong presence of it. It, to me, it's just kind of funny. I feel like we really should be teaming up to say that we're a friendly community for ADD, yet it's hard to say that when I work for DSNWK and the schools aren't compliant. I think a big issue will be with the new elementary schools is where those will go. And right now, at the moment, I'm pretty open to where the elementary schools will be placed. I've heard good arguments on both sides of why maybe it should be next to the high school on the property that the district already owns or if it should be on the other side of town just for convenience. I'm still open to hearing what people have to say. I haven't really been convinced one way or another where it should go. I know one place I don't want it to go is off of Interstate Seventy because I think that brings a lot of safety issues to the children. But I do think if the bond were to pass, that would be one very hot topic in the community and rightfully so because where that elementary school would be placed could also be very strategic to our growth here.
That's time. Thank you very much, Ms. Young. Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
Obviously, the funding issue is a huge component. Uh, the Supreme Court just challenged the, the bill that was passed by the Senate and said that that wasn't constitutionally funding the schools. So, that means potentially more money coming in to the school district, again, after the additional increase that we received this year. Part of that money needs to be set aside for the classroom. That's what the Supreme Court is saying is not being funded, the education in the classroom. When we're looking at what the classroom entails, we have to include teachers and teacher salaries and staff salaries and para educator salaries in that. We need to be able to attract and retain teachers. Uh, right now, it's a struggle to get new people to come to be in the district. And why is that? We need to look at those issues and see if we can come up with some strategic plans. We need to make sure that we're being open and honest with our teachers and having conversations with our teachers so that these things don't blow up, uh, during negotiations and things like that. We need to show the teachers that we care for them and we want them here and that we value them. And sometimes I don't think that's the message that we send to them when we say, well, we just really don't have the money to pay you right now. Uh, and when we require them to come in on, on time off and do things that they're not getting paid for, I think that's a real problem that we need to look at.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, when you're ready.
Well, in addition to the challenges already mentioned, I think the accreditation process is something that the school district's going to have to deal with. For those of you that don't know, in the, back in the day, a, uh, the state would accredit each school building and approve them to accept students. That is still taking place, of course, but they are now using a, what is called a Kansas Education Systems Accreditation Process where each district needs to be accredited. And there's a nice, complex system in place to get the districts and the school buildings accredited. Um, and so that's something that's coming down the pike and the school board is already working on it, the school district's already working on it, but it's just about to hit almost full force pretty soon. So, I think the school board and the district are going to have to spend more time and they will spend more time on the accreditation process. Funding is always an issue. Um, I do agree with, uh, Mr. Daniels here that, um, we need to make sure that we retain good teachers. I think we're kind of lucky though in this district in a, to a certain point because we have Fort Hay State here and we do have a lot of teachers coming out of the education program. But the state as a whole is losing teachers because of funding. And we have to be very careful about that because we don't want, we don't want that to start happening here and it may be already happening. So, I think the accreditation process and hanging on to our good teachers are two big challenges.
Thank you very much. For our final audience question, we'll begin with Ms. Young and a couple of you have already touched on this subject tonight. But with predictions of teacher shortages in the state of Kansas, what would you do to make sure that students in Hayes have a great teacher in every classroom?
Teacher salary. We cannot forget about the teacher salary. I do believe strongly on this subject that the student education is very dependent upon a satisfied teacher. If a teacher does feel underpaid or underappreciated in their, their position, our children are going to suffer. I know what it feels like to be underpaid and underappreciated and it is not a fun feeling or a good spot to be in. So, I do believe that we cannot overshadow that with a bond, we cannot overshadow it with all this maintenance stuff. We do have to still focus on teacher salary.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
I think what everyone looks for in a job is an employer that you can trust, an employer that is going to show you appreciation and that someone is going to value the work that you do. And I think that if we can take steps towards showing our teachers that we appreciate them, showing our teachers that they have value, I mean, they're doing, one of the most important jobs in society is educating our kids and getting them ready for the next level of education or work or job or whatever it might be. We need to be making sure that we're giving them appropriate professional development days. We need to make sure that we're paying for their insurance so they don't have to be worried about their insurance from year to year. We need to look at giving them some sort of guarantee that they will have a job the next year rather than waiting every year to see if their contract is renewed. We need to show them appreciation. We need to say thank you and not just for that week, that is Teacher Appreciation Week. We need to be making that something that we're doing all the time. We've done that at Roosevelt as home and school. We do something once a month for the teachers and it's not big, it's not expensive, but we want the teachers to know that we support them and we care for them and get, we're trusting them with our most important resource, our children. We need to have the best people in there and we do that by doing some of the things that I've spoken about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, when you're ready.
You bet. Yes, I agree that salary and, uh, health insurance are important factors to retaining good teachers. Mr. Daniels also mentioned professional training. That's something that the district is working on providing more of. That makes sense. Uh, that's very important because I think teachers like the professional training that their, and, uh, meetings and, and training seminars they, they can go to. It does help them become better teachers, help them become more engaged in teaching and it, uh, helps them enjoy their job more. Uh, the district can engage in more, in things like the Troops of Teachers Program to reach out to, uh, folks that might want, might want to be teachers that, um, uh, don't have a train, uh, an education degree at the time, so they bring them on board and, uh, help them attain their degree. I realize that's usually at the secondary education level, but it's something we could pursue. And I think, uh, the board, as a board member, I think it'd be helpful to continue things like I'm doing now, to be a member of booster clubs, et cetera, letting the teachers know that we are interested in, in the work that they do and the activities they engage in. Let them know that parents and board members care. That helps as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bickel, when you're ready.
So, uh, I, I think probably one of the most important things we have to do is obviously continue to work with the teachers. Obviously, salary is going to play a huge part in that. I don't think that is the only thing that makes our district, you know, or, or that makes things appealing here for people to come with, but, but we really have tried, I think, the last several years to go through and cut in different areas to try to free up money for salary, um, you know, or to put it back into the salary lines. In fact, just this year, um, you know, we've gone through and actually been able to bring movement to a lot of, a lot of, uh, teachers and staff members that were frozen for a number of years. Um, you know, as was also echoed, or I echo as some of the other things that were brought up, you know, the professional development, col, collaboration, I mean, that's important for the teachers as well to go through and continue the learning and things like that and, and allow them additional things like that. But I also even take it as far as, you know, things like, you know, we talked about the bond. Um, at the end of the day, I mean, that's going to help improve classroom sizes, which is also going to help them out as well in the classroom and, and, uh, help, you know, hopefully make their job easier as well as, as going through and, you know, maybe even making them more effective. You know, a lot of teachers have come to me and actually said, you know, that they feel some of their classroom sizes are too large. So, again, you know, things like the bond and that could help on that. But, uh, I, I think it's something that we have to continue to work closely together on. Um, we have to continue to keep an open dialogue and, uh, you know, I, I think that we are moving in the right direction, but I think, again, that there's still work to be done on that.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute of closing statements. Based on the predetermined order, we will begin with Mr. Daniels, whenever you're ready.
I believe that we need to, as a board, increase the trust that people have in the board from the community, from the teachers, from the staff, from the parents, and I believe that I can do that. I'll do that by being honest, by being a man of integrity, by being transparent with my decision-making process, by listening to people and not just communicating in a one-way fashion, but really having dialogue and listening to what people have to say. I will be approachable and if people have questions or concerns, I want to know them. I want to know them now, uh, even as a candidate. I want to hear from people. What's bugging you? What's going on? What questions do you have? Because we are all in this together. It is not just- It is not just a one-way street here as the board and the staff and the teachers educating our kids. It's a whole community that has to work together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, whenever you're ready.
Wondering if I have a couple of things. I do wanna stress my motto, engagement, commitment, and temperament. I think I'll be, will be able to bring these three things to the board. I was trying this out, and my niece teased me that temperament sounds like I'm trying to market a dog, but I hope you get the idea. I think we need cool heads on the board and in the community. One thing I didn't mention that I want to know is that, well, I won't mention it, because I just forgot what I was gonna say. But I appreciate the time, and I will be glad to hang around and answer more questions if you have them. I agree with all the board members up here. I think we all have a passion for public schools, and we wanna do what's best for students and teachers. And if I elected the board, the first question I'll ask myself every time I'm asked to make a decision is, "Is it good for teachers and the students?" And if it's not, then I'll have to be convinced why.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bickel, whenever you're ready.
In closing, I'd like to again thank the FHSU Student Government Association and the Chamber of Commerce for having us this evening. I'm gonna quote Rocky Balboa here and tell you that I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you that everything is gonna be sunshine and roses, for lack of a better term. I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you that decisions that have to be made are gonna be easy or in some places popular, but what I am going to promise you is that I'll continue to become educated on all the issues that affect us. I'll continue to ask the tough questions that need to be asked, and I'll dedicate the time that's needed to make sure that we address any and all issues that come before us. The financial climate of school districts is not gonna change overnight, and it's very apparent that we're gonna have to continue to do more with less. I know we have many tough challenges that face our district now and in the future, and I can assure you that I'll do everything in my power to contribute to and be a part of the solution. The strength and future of our community depends on our schools and the education our children receive each and every day. I know firsthand this position requires many, many hours to make sure that the proper time is put forth to fully research the decisions that have to be made, and I'm willing to do that. I ask for you to vote for me, Lance Bickel, on November 7th to continue our renewed sense for accountability, physical responsibility, and most importantly...
That's time. Thank you, Mr. Bickel.
Never know the most important part.
Ms. Young, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I know it's late. I just wanted to share that it feels really right and natural for me to be here talking to you guys and to be learning more about the community and the school board and getting to stick my nose into this school bond and figure out more about it. It just excites me the more I learn how much potential this community has and how much it's already done. I just, I wanna share that, you know, as a school board member, individually, I can't do much, but as a team, I can. And I think you should know that there, I do have a passion for some certain things. If there's ever a whole bunch of money that all of a sudden comes available and we can put it anywhere we want, I have a heart for nutritional programming, teacher salaries, and for the arts.
That's time. Thank you, Ms. Young.
Perfect. Thank you.
Before we conclude tonight's forum, I would like to again thank the Hays Area Chamber of Commerce and the FHSU Student Government Association for putting this event together. This evening would also not be possible without the sponsorship of Midwest Energy. Another thank you to the senators of the FHSU Student Government Association for their help and support this evening. Please remember that Election Day is November 7. Let's give a final round of applause to the USD 489 Board of Education candidates. Thank you all for coming out, and have a great evening.